That makes sense. Oh goodness, it's been a week.
Everybody ready?
I will be.
All right, it is 7:31 and I will call this meeting to order. Please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have roll call please?
Mayor Terry Wyngham.
Here.
Vice Mayor Steve Sanger.
Here.
Councilmember Darryl Gardner.
Here.
Councilmember Tanya Lumen.
Here.
Councilmember Bruce Seelov.
Here.
Councilmember Japhlin Wells.
Here.
Councilmember Chris Weisenberg.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. The next thing on our agenda is to approve the agenda. Councilman Weisberg.
I move to approve the June 4th, 2024 city council agenda as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion made in seconded to approve the June 4th, 2024 city council agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed and motion passes with seven yeas.
All right, thank you. The next thing on our agenda is the consent agenda. Vice Mayor Sanger.
I move to approve the consent agenda of June 4th, 2024 as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion made in seconded to approve the consent agenda for June 4th, 2024 as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed and motion passes with seven yeas.
All right, thank you. The next thing on our agenda is citizens' participation. This is a time set aside by Resolution 2C-1996. It sets a time limit for public comment of five minutes for anything that is not on the agenda. Is there any citizens that would like to step forward and talk? You have five minutes. Seeing none, I will move on to the next thing on the agenda, which is the city manager report and staff reports. And Tom, I'll turn the floor over to you.
All right, thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. I am proud to announce tonight that former Rollins Police Chief Michael Reed has been inducted into the Wyoming Law Enforcement Hall of Fame. A little bit about Chief Reed. He began his career with the Rollins Police Department in October of 1988. In 2001, he became the Chief of Police for the Rollins PD. 2004, he was voted by the Wyoming Peace Officers Association as the Peace Officer of the Year. 2012, after 23 years of serving the community, Reed retired from the Rollins Police Department and took a job within Governor Matthew Mead as a senior policy advisor focusing on impaired driving issues. Four years later, in 2016, Governor Mead appointed Reed as the State Fire Marshal, a position he held until 2023. So congratulations to former Chief Reed. By way of dates to keep in mind, we will have our third and final reading of the budget. That will occur on June 13th, next Thursday, and we will hold that at 7:30 that evening. Couple of special events happening in the city. The Carbon County Museum will be hosting a block party Saturday, June 8th, starting at 11:00 a.m. And June 20th, we will have Music in the Park. It will be back in Washington Park. And that will go, the first one will be June 20th, and we will have several of them through July 25th. The next three days, June 5th through the 7th, is the Summer WHAM, the Wyoming Association of Municipalities in Pinedale, in which I will be attending, so I will be out of the office those three days. And we will put Lou LaScunno, our Community Development Director, as the acting city manager during that time that will handle things in my absence. We received a check this week in the amount of $11,322 from the Wyoming Community Gas. And as you recall, council approved those funds in the November council meeting to go towards a new scoreboard to be located at the sports complex. So we have received those funds, and so thank you to Wyoming Community Gas. And that is my report.
Short but sweet.
Yeah.
All right, I'm glad we got those funds. That'll make a big improvement up there. All right, thank you. Next thing on our agenda is the city attorney. Do you have anything for us?
My report will be even shorter. I will also be attending WHAM the rest of this week. And so the city attorney's office will be open and usual, conducting business as usual just with my absence. I will be working remotely and available by email and by phone.
Okay, I'll be up there also. Thanks. And was that all? I'm sorry for need that.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, next thing on our agenda is direction from city council to city manager. Does anybody have anything? Councilman Weisberg?
I just had one safety concern that I've been thinking about, and Myra and I were talking about it briefly, so I wanted to get it out before I forget. When we are approaching my neighborhood, the Scarlet Drive area, there's a lot of times on that 287 bypass where you almost get ran off the road by the semis coming because they're going so fast off of the bypass area. So I don't know if we need to refer to urban systems, but maybe potentially someday getting a third lane, a turning lane. Just a thought.
Is that a state highway there?
Yeah, it would be an urban systems with the state.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes, we can voice that concern.
Yeah, there's been several times that we've almost been hit. Now I have a teenage driver, so it scares me even more.
Don't ride with him.
Scares us too.
He's pretty cautious.
All right, is there anything else? All right, seeing none, we will move on to unfinished business, which is the second reading of the budget. I would entertain a motion. Councilman Weisenberg?
I move to approve the second reading and waive the reading of the ordinance for the fiscal year 2024 to 2025 municipal budget.
Second.
There's been a motion made in seconded to approve the second reading and waive the reading of the ordinance for the fiscal year 2024, 2025 municipal budget. Is there any discussion? Tom?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. Real quick, from the first reading of the budget, we went back through and we documented all the questions, concerns that were voiced that night. And so we have prepared a document tonight for you that we've just entitled the City of Rollins Second Reading of the Municipal Budget. There are hard copies, and I believe that's on the board docs. Just a couple things to point out in there to council. If you turn to page 1, 1 and page 2, the amounts that were discussed and reported during the first reading of the budget are in a column there called "First Reading." And page 1 is the revenue side, and page 2 is the expenditure side of those things. And so on the revenue side, the only change that we had throughout there that we can talk about is we were looking for funding for Edinburgh to accomplish that. And we were about $2.3 million short after exhausting the Sixpenny Fund. And we can use, which I was showing here, a million dollars of impact assistance on that, but that leaves 1.3 million that we still need to find. So for the second reading, you can see that I have that coming out of cash reserves in the general fund so that we can accomplish that. So that's the only change that we had on the revenue side through our discussion. If you turn to page 2, you can see the expenditure side. And likewise, first reading are the amounts that were reported in the first reading of the budget. We would add the $1.3 million to the Streets Department for Edinburgh. The other million dollars out of impact assistance, we had reported budget-wise that we would expend all those funds in the impact assistance. We just did not identify the items. So we will identify 1 million of that towards Edinburgh in the impact assistance. The only other item that affects numbers is we talked about, we have currently a legal assistant position that is employed in the city attorney's office. And that individual has received certification to become a paralegal. And so when we promote her to the paralegal position, we would go from her current step, which I believe is an 18, to a 22. We'd go four steps. And the amount reported there would be salaries and benefits for that promotion. And where we would get that from is out of the non-departmental. And in the non-departmental, we had an insurance number for our property insurance that included the water and the sewer and all those things. We will break those amounts out and place those in the enterprise funds, which are three-up funds. So you will see just a transfer of funds from the non-departmental to the city attorney office, and that is to make that promotion. And those were the only number changes that we could document from the first reading. So the rest of the document that you'll see, and I will just touch on a couple items, were the questions that were asked and discussed, and we researched the answers to those and put them in kind of a question-answer format through the rest of the budget. Discussion item number one, we shared with council preliminary capital budget. And within the first reading of the budget, it was $1.3 million, and we needed to bring that back to 1 million. And so you can see on page 3, where we started, we would propose to move three police vehicles from general fund capital to impact assistance. We removed the two items for the clubhouse, and then we added some funds in there for technology servers that are past end-of-life. So as you can see, from the first reading to the second reading, we brought that to a million dollars, and that's the activity of the change. And if you turn to page 4, you will see the full list of the capital budget that totals 1 million dollars that we set forth in there. So all the items remain except for those that we moved on page 3. And that brings us down to our million-dollar capital budget.
On the technology servers, can you explain that a little? What are those for?
Honorable Mayor, Councilman Gardner, we have a server room downstairs in City Hall that contains the main servers
Oh, sorry, that was...
of the city. And many of those are upwards of 20 years old.
You're talking about the ones here?
Downstairs, correct.
Sorry, I thought it was upgrading tech at the golf course.
No, no, I just put, where did I, I just said information technology, but that is general fund servers. And as you can see, we use that to balance the budget to the millions, so...
You're gonna lose your heat source down there.
That's true. We might fail to have a meeting in the basement without the roar.
Councilman Weisenberg?
Tom, I got a couple questions real quick on the 1.3 million from reserves for Edinburgh Street, and then the million, just to make this knowledge right and make sure I'm thinking about it right, I guess. The 1.3 million's coming out of reserves for the Sixpenny Tax. That will have to be replaced or repaid to the general fund. But the 1 million dollars out of impact assistance will not have to be repaired or repaid to anything because that's an actual impact fund that we don't have to work.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, Councilman Weisenberg, that is correct. The impact assistance funds are one-time funds
Yes.
that can be used. So as we use those, those are expended there. But the other one won't be set up to be repaid to the general fund once the project is complete and we receive sufficient funds in the Sixpenny to pay that back.
So in essence, we will have more money for another Sixpenny project in the future. More funds, I guess, that don't have to be repaid, allocated just to Edinburgh, so we possibly can get another project or two done. So, all right.
And that other 100, and that other million of impact assistance, this is exactly what it's for.
Correct.
So...
Correct.
It's good use of it.
And it will come out of the funds received from Choke Cherry. Okay. Let's see, a couple other items to just touch upon. On page 10, we talk about the distributions to the nonprofit organizations. We have received in from the nonprofit organizations their applications and their asks that is here. What we currently have budgeted is the allocation that we distributed last year, less 10%. And the 10% came from the exercise that we did through the Balancing Act to where council was united on a 10% cut. So right now, that's what we have within the budget. Their ask is in the, I think it's on the first page of this packet, and the asks are higher than the allocation.
Some are.
Now typically, we have them come in through a work session and explain where the funds are being expended. The timing of this year, we have not been able to schedule that. And so our recommendation is that if we pass the budget, we can at a later time have them come in in the fall and go over their allocations and how those have been spent. So we will still have that, it just won't be at the budget time. It'll be...
And if necessary, we can make budget adjustments.
Absolutely, at that time.
Okay.
The question was asked in the first reading about salary increases. Are we able to do salary increases? And on page 22 of your report, we had talked about the change in health insurance, that if we were to change health insurances from self-insured to the WEEB trust, we felt that we would save about $300,000 there. And that that would be good to put that onto the salary base at the time. And so when we went to balance the budget with the deficit that we had, we had to add that $300,000 into the 2.3 million that we were trying to balance to. So it got absorbed into that, so we didn't have 300,000 that we could just say or ask to be put over. I have on page 22, if we were to look at $300,000 towards salaries, that would be a 5% increase to the base. That would come up within the general fund, 261,000, and that is with the three contract employees removed from there so that the negotiations could happen with the salary outside of here if that was the desire of council. And so with that, if we were to look to increase the salary base at an amount that council would desire, it would be about 5% per 300,000. And if we were to do this at this point, what we would have to do is use the one-time money that we would get through the wind turbine projects off of sales tax and those things. And that will, or should last us if that project goes all the way through about five years. And so there is sufficient funds there, obviously, through that time. Where my concern comes in is at the end of those five years, revenue will come back to the base level. And if we increase operating expenses through that time without a sales tax base increase, we're gonna have a large gap at that point where expenditures will be much higher than available revenues. And so to counteract that, if we were to add and use those one-time funds, we would have to put measures into place so that within five years, we are back within our revenue baseline at that point.
Councilman Weisberg?
I feel very strongly that we need to increase. I don't think we'll have city employees if we don't. It's become a major problem, and I don't think we have an option, in my opinion.
Well, and I can tell you, besides the impact funds, when the, within five years, they'll be standing up turbines. And then there'll be a huge increase of sales tax coming in, which is also kind of one-time funds. However, it will be one-time funds that will go far enough to go for years and years. So I'm comfortable doing that myself.
Yes.
Also, does anybody have a problem with that? Councilman Lumen?
Only, oh, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I do agree that we need to increase the salaries or we won't have people, which brings me to another question about the finance director. I know here you have a paragraph about maybe finding an accountant. When you talked to the people, you said they weren't qualified. Did you find anybody qualified but wanted more money?
No, I have not.
Because I was just wondering if you found a qualified applicant, if they were higher, what their range would be?
Honorable Mayor, Councilwoman, no, we're at a point within the finance office to where we are upgrading policy procedure. And I just feel at this time, it's really important to have an accounting background that's able to do bookkeeping and month enclosures and those things. We could not find that through the applicants that we had. I'm sure there was, you know, there was potential there to learn those things. But I think where the salary level is, it's just hard... I think where the salary level is, it's just hard to attract those at this time.
How much do you think you'd have to increase it to attract somebody that would work?
I would, I would guess between 30 and 40% from where it's at.
Can we find that in the budget?
We could.
I mean, I want to give all the employees a raise, because I don't think they've had any for a while, and these people work their tails off, I don't care which one you pick, but I would rather give up something in the way of capital of 30,000 or whatever to get a finance director to take some weight off of you, Tom.
Okay, well, I'm more than happy to put that in.
And that's been discussed a little bit all along, so.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Sanger?
What is 30 and 40% in dollars?
The base salary right now is 74, so that would put it just over about $100,000.
And then the maximum salary is 100,000, so it'd be 100.
Okay. Councilman Wells?
My only other thought, Tom, is sometimes, I mean, COLAs sound nice in theory, the 5% across the board, but I know we have some weird discrepancies in some of our pay structure. And I know, we've talked about the salary study. I'm not saying that's a good salary study, I'm not saying it's a bad salary study. I just think that there should be some sort of system to evaluate our positions and what they should be, because maybe not all of them need a, you know, 5%, maybe they need a 3, and then some need a 7. It's just a thought. But I do think that it's important to consider the whole picture and not just a blanket COLA.
And I would like to say that, I think 5% is in line, but I also agree that some need to be higher than that. But the salary study we were presented with, it only took like five minutes to find so many things that just weren't acceptable. So, we do need to look at that again, and I'm not sure how to approach that, but that's, that, I'm asking you for advice, not tonight, but how to, what we should do.
I feel with that, by looking at our salary schedule, you're right, there are many inconsistencies in it right now. And I believe that we could fix a lot of that in-house by just looking at the job descriptions and getting things to the right place, getting the compensation in the places that we needed. So, I feel we could do a lot of that within-house, but I do feel at a point, we need to do a salary study and have an expert come in that can say, yes, you're on the right path, or no, or whatever, so that we don't get too far. But I can, I can bring for the third reading, a proposal of several of those that are obvious that need to be fixed. But I think that at some point, yes, we need to have an actual salary study performed.
I agree. Councilman Weisenberg?
I just want to say I agree with Councilwoman Wells on that utilizing that money to do it properly, to make the step increases proper and to align the positions and that salary schedule properly. And if that means someone gets a 1% and someone gets a 7%, that's kind of how it's going to have to work, in my opinion. I think that's the only way to make the positions correct, so.
So, would, so would council be acceptable to a 5% increase and then work on those items after that to bring certain areas into alignment, or would you not want the 5% increase and for us to work on the salary?
I think we would all agree to, maybe not all of us, but enough of us would agree to do the 5%. I mean...
Yeah, I think we need to do something now, for sure.
Yes.
Okay, and then work on...
Councilman Garner?
Chris was, Councilman Weisenberg was before me.
Okay, but I called on you.
Okay, all right. Drew a blank on your name, sorry, Tom. If you had your choice, would you rather do the steps first than the 5% or figure out, would you rather do the 5% or the steps? I mean, because if we delay doing this, you know, a little bit to get the steps in, would that be, it seems like that's a better option, because that's going to bring up all those positions that we don't have filled right now. And I feel like that would be more effective than a 5%. The 5% is great, because it's a Band-Aid, but what is, what's your opinion on that?
Honorable Mayor, Councilman Garner, I feel that with inflation the last few years, I think that a 5% increase across the board is definitely warranted to all positions. I think they've all fallen. But I also agree that the salary schedule we have currently is so inconsistent that the positions aren't off significantly. And so, I think if we, from my perspective, if we were to offer 5% at this point, we can come with some other recommendations to council for the third reading. But I think if we went 5% and then performed a salary study or an in-house salary study first and then go to the outside, one thing that we currently do not utilize in the city is job evaluations that is tied to merit increases. We don't currently do that, and we should. That's something that is vital. Staff want to know how they're performing. Are they performing well, or do they need improvement? And I think as we implement job evaluations and we implement some of our human resources that we want, I think that a salary study and those things would be warranted at that time.
Thank you, Councilman Weisenberg.
My fear is that we're already offered $300,000 off of this, and we're going to have to go to one-time funds. And you're increasing a salary, which is out of an annual budget item that is not going to be covered by one-time funds. And I understand, we're going to have sales tax coming in and increases coming in and stuff, but that does not warrant and guarantee that we're going to cover that, all of the money that you're talking about possibly putting in. I care about the employees 100%, and I want them to have the wages that they're well-deserving of. But at the same time, we're limited on what we can do, and I fear that if we do it this way, that we're not going to have the funds, and that we're going to have to cut more than what we're going to have, what we already are asked to cut now. So, I myself think we should look at the step increases or the percentages, right, that we've talked about for the proper salaries, because some of the salaries on the schedule is way out of alignment. So, some are high, some are low, okay? So, if we are already high in some areas on their position, then we give a 5% increase on top of their position, that just made that whole schedule the same problem we have. Instead of fixing what we have, looking at what we could do at a COLA raise also, on top of the percentages to get to, you know, allow them to have that bump, I think that's the more proper way to do it. That's my opinion. I think we're going to, we're going to push the same issue out there that we already have if we do it with just the 5% across the board. So, I'm not in favor of that.
Though, I want to point out, because of inflation, the 5% just barely covers the cost of living, the COLA raises. Councilman Wells, you had your hand up.
I was going to say that.
I, if we don't give the raises, that means that everybody's working for less than they were a year ago, because the cost of living has gone up, and we haven't given raises in a couple of years, and I feel real strongly about the 5% across the board. Councilman Lumen?
I agree with the 5% across the board, and of all due respect, I don't think we have many positions that are paying above what they should be paid. Also, I want to note that in your list of items to consider for the upcoming fiscal year, you have number nine, restructuring the salary pay grades. So, you already have that on your agenda to relook at that this coming year, and so we can more clearly see what we're paying everybody in comparison to other places are paying them and kind of restructure it so it's more fairly and equitably distributed.
I agree with that. Who had your hand up first? Councilman Weisenberg?
I want to know as a council right now, individually, if you want to say, what services are we going to cut? If you're sitting in this chair, what services are you going to cut that we offer to the community if we cannot pay the employees? Because we'll be vested already in that asset of things.
But you're talking about five years from now. There are no crystal balls sitting in front of any of us. Vice Mayor Sanger?
Well, our CREG report is built on income, and anytime you have inflation, your taxable income also goes up, because the price of bread just went up, price of car just went up. So, what you're collecting in sales taxes is actually higher than what they're anticipating, because you have more tax dollars in the inflation itself. Currently, we run ahead of what the CREG report tells us when we get it, give or take by about $2 million. So, I don't have heartburn over a 5% raise. That's 261,000 bucks. That doesn't bother me, because inflation is going to offset by increasing the total sales tax that's going to be coming into the community anyway. That being said, I agree, it's going to be offset by turbines sitting on the hills behind us over here, and that's 20 years of guaranteed increase. We'll have the other problem. Once we fix our water, we have another problem. We have too much water. Once we have turbines, we have way too much, we have way much more money coming in. So, we have multiple problems that are on the good side and the bad side. I understand your concern. I get your concern. I don't think you're going to have to go through that process, because inflation will take care of that increase.
Councilman Weisenberg?
Agreed to a point, but inflation has not taken care of that increase so far in what we're presented. Otherwise, we wouldn't be asked to cut 2.3 million out of the budget. And I'm not trying to be argumentative, but when you're talking about tax on bread, that don't happen in Wyoming.
I know that.
Right? So, that's where a lot of our tax revenue come from, and we lost. And that's why the state has been nice enough at this point in time to at least allocate us some money, you know, to help cover that cost. But I fear that, you know, I still fear that that's going to be the case. If it's five years, 10 years down the road, whatever it shall be, we're still needing to take care of our city.
Councilman Wells?
Well, we still need our employees. And if we don't have any employees to run the city, then we don't have a city. And so, we have to show that we value our employees enough to give them something, because I just got this report that said that a household of four is now paying $11,000 more a year on food and expenses than they were two years ago. And to me, the 5% is not even going to touch that.
Also, added to that is, in order to have a brighter future, you have to have a brighter present. And I believe, I firmly believe, with the way things have gone, we're not only going to have this wind farm, but we're going to have more new businesses. We've gotten several just this last year. I think more is coming. I just have faith in our growth, and what we're talking about is 200 and some thousand dollars to wake up in the morning and know there's people going to go out and get in those red trucks and go to work.
Yeah.
And it's very important to me. And I guess, just so we give you the proper guidance, I guess I'm going to ask for a consensus of who all agrees to the 5% in addressing the inequities in, at a future date. Would you please hold your hand up?
He still has a question.
Councilman Garner?
So, I agree with Councilman Weisenberg, and I agree about the 5%. My fear is the same as his. We, the one-time money, using that to Band-Aid this increase, I don't, I don't think it's a good idea ever. The, we have, how many positions have we frozen?
Five.
Five, and there's police department, and then we've got the HR, and then we've got...
Parks.
Yep, and what's the other one?
DDA.
And then the grants, right. All very important positions. And I would, I would rather have these positions put back in place and do this increase at the same time. The problem is, we need to decide what our needs are and what our wants are. We have, we have the golf course that is running us in the negative of a tune of over 300,000. And if we can find a solution, if we could, you know, rent that out or lease it out, or, you know, and try that, if it doesn't succeed, then cut it, because that's where your money is. That's where we're tied up. We're tied up in wants and not needs. And it sounds like from everybody here, we want our employees taken care of, and we want our services, and we want our safety and all that to be top priority. Or we got to give up some of our wants, we may have to, to get these needs that we have to have in place. And that's my biggest concern, is we're talking about this, we're not talking about the things that are drawing the biggest negative on us. And I think that's a bigger issue than trying to figure out where this money's going to come from. Because if we take care of those, if we take care of what's taking, taking the most money out of our pockets, then we have this money in place to take care of the police, to take care of the finance director, to take care of the increases, so that we have employees 24/7 working here.
The problem I see with that is, we have seven parks that bring in nothing. They bring in nothing. So, I mean, we have rec center that loses more money than the golf course. We have, we don't make money off of really anything on this page. So, we can't get rid of all of it.
I agree. With the parks, what, I mean, there's, we have massive parks. What if we cut back 25% of the sizes of them and said, okay, we're no longer maintaining this? That's going to save us some money, because this 25% would let it go natural scape, whatever, and/or sell the property, make some money that way, bring in more housing, you know, just other solutions. The rec center, we got the shooting range, you know, we could do an automated system out at the main one where you badge in, rather than having a full-time employee that sits out there, because every shooting range I've ever been to, that you don't pay for, you know, there's multiple people out there, everybody's fine. The one up here, we could put security system at, it's a one-time fee, instead of having a body there, you know, and then bring some savings that way.
Well, and I understand what you're saying, but to get the system to badge in and out and cameras and all that, that's not free. And then the other part of it is, is to zero scape is not free. And I do agree... is not free. And I do agree, we, we water way too much grass, in my opinion. And we, we could change the size of some of those parks, but we can't do it by July 15th.
Right.
And that's what we're up against. So those kind of changes are something that can take place over the next, if that's what everybody's so motivated to do. And I didn't mean it that way, but if that's what they're motivated to do, that's, you do that over a period of time. And, but that's not our problem today. So I can tell you that the people that work for our city should get a 5% raise. I just feel so strongly about that. I, I, I will, I will go back, I would like to, I would like to see a show of hands of people that right now would support the 5% across the board raise. So, I guess it's, and then we need to address the rest of it. Okay, Tom?
Correct. And if you would draw your attention to page 24, I have outlined 11 steps that we will take as an organization to help identify, define the services that we have. And that will help us with exactly what we're saying in that we are, we have expanded our services beyond our revenue capability at this point. And I, I have 11 different ideas that I've kind of set as goals, that we will work on throughout the next couple of years that will help us with the business plan, define what the city does, and see what is a priority, you know, to the city and what is.
And capabilities. Councilman Weisenberg?
I just want to say, real quick, just, and just to, to Councilman Garner, I, I understand, like, cutting back 25%, going back to Natural Scape or natural, the natural landscape there. But that takes a lot more than just a, a cut of 25% out and letting it grow back to natural. We have ordinances in place that actually don't allow a developed place that's already been a pre-developed place, already go back to natural landscape, right? You're supposed to maintain that and plant stuff that makes it, for beautification reasons and stuff like that. Prime example is Mountain View School Yard, right? That's not supposed to be natural landscape, back to sagebrush and everything else. That's supposed to be clean-cut grass, mowed down and everything else, due to the fact that there's ordinance, ordinance is in place that mandate that to happen, but it's just not enforced properly. So just so you're aware, that it takes a lot more than just letting it go back 20, taking 25% out or whatever. There's other things that would have to be changed on the ordinance and everything else, too.
And not that that can't be done.
Yeah.
It just, it's a step-by-step process. And, and I do agree with you. In Arizona, it's in the desert. We're in the desert. We went to a park, their baseball field didn't have a piece of grass. They had horseshoe pits, they had covered picnic tables. It was really a nice park. It was run by the county and it took the man, we were there when he showed up, and he picked up all the trash, emptied the garbage, la-la-la, took him a half hour and he's gone. And it really made me go, wow, that's something we should consider. But anyway, Tom, that's, today's today, that's a, that's a futuristic plan.
Thank you for that. And I will prepare accordingly for the third reading of the budget. I will make sure that we get that in. The, the rest of the packet, I will let council read through. I'm happy to answer any other questions that you may have in there. But it was intended to answer the different questions and concerns that were posed during the first reading. With that, that's all the things that I'd like to include in the second reading.
Did you have a question?
I do, but I think I can ask it for the, the new health insurance.
We'll talk about it here in a minute.
Talk about it. I can wait until then.
Okay. Councilman Garner?
One other suggestion, it's not going to be a favorite up here, probably, I don't think, but, was it, four years, four years ago, the council got an increase in pay? And I don't know how everybody else feels, but I would be okay with going back to what the pay was prior to that fourth, that, prior to when we got on council. And I think it was 300, was it, it's half of what we get now.
500 and 750 for the mayor position, is what it was previous.
Is it?
And that was, that was voted in by the previous council to give that raise to the council members before we, yeah. And so they were not allowed to get that raise. It's the seated council coming in.
So it would take about two years to fully.
To fully even develop that.
So you would be binding the next council to a lower salary, which I don't think is even legal.
Well, how did, I mean, how did they do it then?
Well, because it was an increase. I, I can tell you, there's a reason a lot of people don't run for office, and it's because it doesn't pay. And even if the rate we're being paid now, honestly, I know I don't earn minimum wage. I don't. I quit keeping track because it was depressing. My day started in meetings at 3:00 in Saratoga, at a water meeting, to help Sinclair with securing water rights. And I had to rush home, get here, da-da-da. And the rest of this week, of course, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, most of us, it can be, will be in Pinedale. And it's, it's, it's not even close to minimum wage. But, and those difference in money total really isn't that much when you add it all up. It really isn't. It wouldn't buy, it wouldn't buy a car a year. It wouldn't. So it's, you know, everybody think about it. We got one more reading. And.
I'd like to look into the legality of it, because usually, once you're at a salary, you can't reduce.
You could stay at it until, like, for instance, I was the chairman of the Carbon County Commissioners, I was paid 1,800 a month. Everybody else was paid 2,500.
Yeah.
And two years later.
You can increase, but you can't decrease.
I went up, but I was actually the chairman and I was being paid less. But you can't get that until the next election.
Right.
So if you go down, it would only affect the people that haven't signed up yet or whatever, because, I don't know, but you're right. I would like to know exactly what is the legality to that.
It'd be good to know.
I will look into that, but quick cursory search is saying salary commissions can implement pay increases at any time, although decreases cannot take effect until after the time of the official's term of office. When elected officials set their own salaries, increases and decreases are generally prohibited during their term of office.
So.
But I'm not sure. This is, I, I will look into it. That is just cursory search.
I know that if you, if we would increase our wages, which is normally how it's gone and everything I've been involved with, you don't get that until you win another election.
Yeah.
You can't get, you cannot set a higher wage during your term. It has to be during, after the election, the next election. I, I'm just positive of that. Councilman Weisenberg?
That's very true. And Councilwoman Wells can attest to that, due to the fact that she was previously serving when that went into effect. She received 500 dollars and the in, in-boarded council come on and was making a wage of 750, and she could not receive that until she was re-elected.
Correct. And that's the way it was with pretty much every elected body.
But I know in most circumstances, you legally can't take away pay.
And that is an interesting thing, so.
But I don't know how it works with elected officials. I just know how it works in the.
We could look into that, if, if you would. Okay, thank you. I think you're right. But we'll, we'll find out. I don't know the law.
It might be different for elected officials, but from what I've known of salaries, you can't take away.
Right. Okay. So, more?
That's it.
All right.
Unless you want more.
I, are we going to go with the insurance?
Yes, and that's a separate.
Okay. Are we done? Ready to move on? Okay, thank you all.
You need to, Mayor, you need to vote.
Okay.
If, if, it's your call.
Kelly, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I was just.
Come to the podium and, yeah, sign in and tell us who you are, even though I know the people on TV don't know who you are.
All right.
Or might not.
Yeah. Nobody knows me. Yeah. I was, I want to talk about, you know, our infrastructure and, and our roads. We need to start doing something, right? I mean, I know you guys are trying to figure it out, but we haven't done nothing in, you know, two, three years. And the people are kind of getting angry, as you know. Everybody, you know, they run across me all the time, hey, when's this going to be done? When's that going to be done? I said, I don't know, go to the council meeting and stuff, you know, go, go, go voice your opinion, what's going on out there. But what we need to start doing is, like on some of these projects, take Edinburgh for, for instance, we can start doing the storm drain there this year. But that place there has a lot, a lot of water under it. So as a contractor, I would not really do the whole job at one time unless I'm getting rid of that water ahead of time. And that's what you need to do, is, so you don't want to do, well, that road's already messed up already. So you're better off.
But you can't drive on it without having a tank.
Right, right. So, so I, so I, I'm thinking is, you know, we need to get the storm system in there right away, like this year. We need to get that in there so we can start getting the drainage, the water out of there. You're gonna, that road's already tore up and stuff. We're just going to maintain it, you know, and that'd be, that could be on the contractor, whoever does that job, just to maintain it until the following year, when we do the rest of the job and stuff. But it's something, we need to show people that we're doing something. It's what we need to do, you know, whether it's a, a small road, or a big road, or a part of a project. But we need to start showing people that we, that we do care, that we really need to.
And Kelly, I understand what you're saying, but when you open it up.
Yep.
And you dig, what, six or eight feet deep?
Mm-hmm.
You put in a storm sewer.
Yep.
You got to pay somebody to bury it.
Yep.
And then somebody to dig it back up.
No.
And put the water in.
No, no.
The water in the sewer in.
So the storm, yes.
And then bury it back up.
So you need to, right. So you have to get rid of that water. I, I'm, I'm telling you, that is a mess up there. That is a complete mess up there. So once you get that storm system in, you're going to start getting rid of the water, you know, because you're going to start plumbing in some of the tile drains that are engineered for that. And we need to get rid of that because it's, it's just not going to get any better. And if you try to do it all at one time, that's a failure. You're setting yourself up for a failure. You're setting yourself up for more extra costs. You know, they're going to be coming, the contractor's going to be coming in here. We need an extra. Because I, I'm just, I, you know, I'm just, just saying, you know, that's, that's the way it's, you know, just looking at that. If, has, has anybody core drilled that over there? Tested that?
Actually, there has been an engineer in there. I'm going to call on Councilman.
Yeah, go ahead.
We'd have to ask him better about it. I believe our drainage out there, storm drainage is all curtain guttering in it. There is no sewer, like, no drains, no underground in it.
Yeah.
So basically, this drainage is all the curtain gutter and all of that.
Yeah. And you can see the water coming up out of the ground. I'm sure you've seen that.
Oh, yeah, there's, there's nothing.
You got to get rid, you got to get rid of that water, right?
No.
Yeah.
But it's like Washington Street, or the street in front of the pen.
Yep, yep.
That was bit out, but there was no bit for the 70-year-old sewer.
Right.
So there was a change order, because why in the world would you put a new street over top of a 70-year-old sewer?
Exactly.
And I do know that if you go in and you do the bottom of it, you start at the bottom and work your way up.
Yes, absolutely.
And every time you close that incision, you're adding more expense. And the problem we've had is, that is a sixpenny project.
Yep.
And we have not collected enough money to even do that project yet.
Right.
So we have agreed to take money, A, out of the impact funds and out of the reserve funds, so that we can start on that project and get it done.
Right.
Inflation has outrun us. It's been, it's been a horrible situation.
Yeah.
But we are playing with the cards we were dealt, Kelly.
Yeah. Can you take any part of that sixpenny money and do a section of the job? Can you? Is that a yes or a no?
I'm sure we, I'm sure we could, but.
I mean, we should, right? I mean, because, because, because the more we wait, the more expensive.
We're not waiting anymore, just so you know. We have given a go-ahead to get this thing done.
Oh, I got you.
And then as we collect the rest of the sixpenny money, that will repay the 1.3 million that is coming out of the reserve fund.
Right.
Just to get it done.
Right.
And so, anyway, you'll, you'll see action on that. Councilman Weisenberg?
I just want to speak to a few things that you had said on here. First and foremost, the sixpenny money is specific purpose tax money. It was voted on it by the, the citizens of Rawlins, okay? And there are specific things that we can do, replacing or upgrading the, the water lines, sewer lines and stuff like that. It's not in the actual question that was voted on. So that is a no-go for that. Okay? So the other thing that you're talking about, I agree, understand, do it in a phase to get rid of the groundwater over there.
Yep.
But urban systems is kind of going through this with the under tunnel right now, or the walkway, the, the underpass for the pedestrian walkway. And they're actually doing the study and figuring out what, how they can mitigate it, which will in return help mitigate the problem in the future for us to be able to not have to invest a bunch of money into this to figure out how to do what you're talking about, right?
Yeah.
So I think we need to lean on them a lot more and let them kind of take that on themselves.
Yep, yep.
So just so you're aware, that is taking place.
Okay.
It's not taking place with the city council, though, or the allocated funds.
Allocated funds, yeah.
There was a gentleman back there that had his hand up. Did you want to speak, sir?
If I may?
You, yes, certainly.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your patience.
No problem.
Yeah, absolutely. My name is Benjamin Shepherd. I've been a resident of Rawlins since early 2009. When I left the great state of Michigan to come out here and work for the Wyoming Department of Corrections at the Penn here, I, I worked there for six and a half years. I watched the game between employees and the administration, and pay was always an issue. Okay? 5% sounds great, but being somebody who was an employee, 5% wouldn't have made me feel better at the end of the day if you guys couldn't guarantee it long-term. Inflation being what it is, I see more people cutting the cost of expenditures, trips. I see people not buying eggs right now because of the cost of stuff. So you guys want to talk about bringing in these funds with inflation taxes and stuff, it's not going to last. People aren't going to keep supporting the system. You know, people are upset with the roads. People are upset with just the state of, the way law enforcement goes about things in some, some stances. Not that law enforcement's bad here, by any means. I know the police chief's usually here. Normally, we have good interactions with you guys, but there's been concerns, not just because of the city, but because of the way that the entire country is right now. And that inflation is not. And that inflation is not just here locally. It's affected by the rest of the country. So we can't guarantee that money heaps coming in. I, I, and I know you guys say, again, five percent's great. I would've loved nothing more than a raise for my six and a half years I worked there. I got a raise one time, it equaled out to a penny an hour. You should've kept the money. It was smack in the face. It actually lowered morale out there when they paid us like that.
I just have to tell you, we can do what we can do, and we can't do what we can't do. And even though it's a token, I just, myself, I just want our employees to know that we're doing something for them and we do appreciate them.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor.
I, I'm on a fixed income, and my wife is on a fixed income, so I'm the guy that looks at those eggs and goes, "Ah, we'll do something else." I, I'm the same way, but I'm just telling you, we want to do what we can do.
Absolutely, and I understand what you're saying. I'm just telling you from personal experience, and I worked with over a hundred employees out there. None of us cared. It didn't matter that we got the pay increase, because the pay increase, at that point, wasn't worth it. I don't know what five percent would be out here. You guys already talked about how the, the budget doesn't look the same maybe as the rest of the state and it needs to be evaluated. That's fine. I think that in evaluation, telling people you're looking for a way to give them that raise, but you wanna ensure that you can stabilize it, would be, would go a lot further for the confidence of the people that are working for you.
Well, I know we can do it for five years, and at the end of five years, I believe, Rawlins will have other, there's so many things on our horizon.
There's growth. You're, you're talking about business growth. You're talking about the fans and other things. My concern is eggs aren't gonna stay at the price they are, milk's not gonna stay at the price it is, gas isn't gonna stay at the price it is. It, it's not gonna really matter at the end of the day. There's gonna be an economic turn here coming, and we need to make sure that the funds are there, 'cause what happens if it doesn't work out? And I, I hate to be the naysayer here.
If it doesn't, then we'll have to go back.
But you gotta cut people, fire people, and all of a sudden, everything you were promising them for five years just disappeared. And it goes into bringing down what people see.
Yeah, but I don't know what's gonna happen ten years from now, or twenty-five years from now.
Or tomorrow.
Right, so we can't cut everybody, because tomorrow.
I didn't say cut 'em, Mr. Mayor. I'm just, I believe that the people would be more reinforced and, and believing in what this council's doing if they take the steps to make sure that we're covered. I think that's the biggest word that, that we need to look at, is we need to be covered here. Because if it's not, and the economy turns, and you guys threw the five percent, five years down the road, there's no economy left, you guys gotta cut back, over that duration, people are gonna leave too, that aren't working for you, and the taxes are gonna get even lower. Who says you make it back to zero, back to baseline? There's, there's a lot of budget there that, to me, sounds like guesswork and in attempt to get people to feel better about the situation without an actual verification to it.
Vice Mayor Sanger.
It is guesswork. We get a Craig report at the beginning of the year. That Craig report is based upon assumed sales throughout. Do we just ignore that?
So you're assuming budget based on projected?
Yeah.
Not prior?
For the past one hundred years.
Does it use anything prior to evaluate that process?
They don't use history.
It's done by the state.
It's done by the state. They send it to us.
People far, far smarter than us.
I would question that.
Well, of course you would.
We could, but then we don't know what money we have.
The only safe thing to do would be to not pay anybody anything. Then we know that five years from now, they'll be getting the same.
Okay.
I mean, I'm just telling you, it is, there is no guarantees to anybody that this economy is gonna stay where it's at.
Oh, it won't.
I believe it's gonna go up, because I'm well aware of a lot of different projects that are going on around the the county for that matter, that affect us.
Okay.
And, uh, if I didn't think we could sustain that, for sure, I wouldn't be for it.
That, that's my only concern, and you, as the mayor, would have more insight into those kind of productions coming forward that I don't have. I don't know what the growth is.
I'm not magic. I'm just telling you, experience and what I know, the meeting I was at earlier today, those sort of things tell me we're fine doing what we're doing. And is it guaranteed? Absolutely not, I'm sorry.
No, I-
It just isn't.
I understand what you're saying. I just know that from somebody who doesn't have a job, who hasn't had a job for years, who lives off of his girlfriend's income, and literally, that's, that's how I make it right now. Um, talking to my neighbors and knowing what the expenses are and stuff, it's gonna go down. You guys are gonna lose income off of tax revenue, because people are just gonna stop spending. It's happening. It's happening already. I don't see it continuing to grow. Maybe I'm wrong. A-again, you're right, it is absolutely guesswork. We're both, we're both playing the guessing game here. I think we're just on different sides of where we see things going, but from a standpoint of somebody who's not council, who's never been in that administrative position, but who's done the grunt work, who's been on the floor, who, who walked with the criminals for, you know, the money, um, talking to fellow employees, talking to other people that work there. The raise is great, but a temporary raise does not. It raises more concern than it does resolve in people.
Your point is well taken. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay. Councilman Garner.
I had a question for, uh, Kelly.
Yes, sir.
Or just, uh, clarification. So your suggestion is to put the storm s- system in to allow that, is it, is it a long period that needs to happen to allow that water to, to drain out of there?
Right. The concern is to get rid, so you still, you wanna get that water out of that, out of that base, you know, out of that, out of that road. So with the drain tiles and the, and the storm drain that's allocated for that job, we need to start, that's where we need to start to, because it's gonna cost, I, I know we need those core drills and everything. I don't know what those say, but there's a lot of water. There's a lot of issues there. Lot more than people think there is. Okay, I drive over a bumpy road. Okay, we'll throw some asphalt over it. That doesn't fix the problem. Problem lies below it. The, and that's, and that's that water. You got to get rid of that water. Um, that's the number one thing.
But Kelly, that's why we have had that road engineered.
Yes.
Is because the people that do know.
Yep.
Which I don't know. That, that's why it's been engineered, and, um, we don't wanna do, we don't wanna do a terrible job. And we're done. We want that to be a classy road.
Well, we want all our roads in town to be classy. Absolutely.
I want them all gold-plated, but we're gonna have to settle that, settle with classy.
Yes, yes.
The fact of the matter is, is that's why we have, you have to have them engineered, and, and
Yep.
No one besides an engineer can really, really know.
Right, so ask-
And it has been engineered.
Right. We could talk to Carl.
It's gonna be ready to go, uh, next spring. Is that right, Cody? And by next spring, it will be started on, and it'll be a really nice road when it's done.
Yeah.
Well, name it Kelly.
Name it Kelly. I, I just, I'm just afraid, uh, if you try to do that whole job at one time, it's gonna cost more.
Well, our engineers-
I mean, that's something that you need to talk to your engineers about. You know, I'm not the, I'm not the engineer. You guys ain't the engineers. We really need to say, "Hey, just ask, just ask the question. Is, is this something that we should probably do ahead of time, uh, to get rid of this, this issue that's underneath this road?" I think it's a question to ask, you know?
And I'm sure that those things, this, that thing's been studied for a long time, that road and the issues that go with it. And then you couple that to the underpass, and you kinda have the same problem.
Yes, they are having the same problem.
You don't have to reinvent the wheel. You can lean on each other for information.
Yep.
Anyway, thanks for your comments, and I'm sure, uh, Cody back there's listening, and we will approach it with that.
Yeah, absolutely, and you guys are doing a wonderful job, so just leave it, leave it there. There you go.
Thank you. Thank you.
But I still think we still need to do a project this year, period.
I, I hope we, I hope we can.
Yes.
But I don't wanna lay off everybody who works for the city to get it done.
No, no, no.
I wanna, I wanna do it while we get the money.
Yes.
And we have pushed, like I said, to take a million out of reserve, million out of reserve fund, and one point, or one point three out of the reserve fund, and a million out of, uh, the, uh, impact assistance to push this project along.
Yep.
And that, that's about the best we can do, sir.
Yeah, absolutely, and stuff, but, yeah, as long as we can try to get a, just, just something.
We can do a road, but I, I wanna do the one that needs it the most, and that's the one we've identified.
Yeah, it's showing that faith, you know, that, hey, the city is doing something, right?
We are.
I know, but, you know, they're not see, you know, it's that touchy, smelly, you know, feel good. That feel good, right? Yes, sprinkle that dust on there.
Yeah, all right. Thank you. All right. Yes?
I do have an answer for you now regarding salaries.
Okay.
For council and mayor. In cities in Wyoming, operating under our type of government with, uh, city manager type of, uh, government, form of government, and the mayor who is elected, um, by the council, the mayor may not receive more than twice the salary of the other council members. And ultimately, uh, okay, and council members may not receive less than ten dollars, nor more than one hundred fifty dollars for actual attendance at regular meetings. That's set by statute. However, Rawlins, in a resolution in twenty nineteen, uh, its resolution number zero six dash two, twenty nineteen, established that, beginning January first, twenty twenty-one, that the council would not apply the statutes, the statutory rates to council, and opted out of this, the, the seller, the, sorry, opted out of applying the statutory salary rates and has established salaries for mayor and council members by resolution. And that is when it was determined to set the salary at seven hundred and fifty dollars per council member, and the mayor at one thousand dollars per month. There is another statute, though, that it is fifteen three two oh five, subpart C, provides that any elected or appointed mayor or city councilman may elect not to receive all or part of their salary or compensation during the time of their term.
But don't, I believe that was challenged, and they have to do that at the beginning of their term.
But that is their own, oh, is that their, I don't see any case law on this.
Yeah. I do know in Cheyenne and Gillette and a few places like that, some of their councilmen are, are paid like even up to sixty thousand a year. Uh, but much bigger cities, and they're more-
They also have different forms of government.
And they're more full-time than part-time and such. I mean, there's every, there's not two types of government in Wy- in Wyoming. There's several. But with ours, that's what we have. So, anyway, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any more discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed. A motion passes with seven ayes.
All right, thank you. The next thing on our agenda is to, uh, approve, uh, awarding of a bid. Uh, Councilman Lumen had her hand up first.
I move to approve and award the bid received from Dorset Controls out of Leighton, Utah in the amount of eight hundred twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred forty-four dollars and eighty-two cents.
Been a motion made in second to approve and, and award the bid received from Dorset Controls out of Leighton, Utah, in the amount of eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars and eighty-two cents. Is there a discussion? And I will turn this over to you, Cody.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. Uh, upon putting out the, the RFP for the complete SCADA rehab of the, our water systems, we received four bids for this, uh, four really good companies. Um, after putting together a, a bid review group, we all sat and reviewed the bids separately and then came together and did a matrix. Um, we found that one of, uh, the companies was just a little bit too high for the proposal. Um, one was a very good design for data with, but did not have the controls aspect to it. And in the other two, we felt like, uh, Dorset had a more complete, uh, bid design and breakdown of the data side and the control side. Um, and it came in less than it, the, that competitor closest to it. Um, there was other options with the other competitor, which would take it over eight hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, which would be about, I think, twenty thousand dollars over Dorset. So we just felt that it was a more complete design package and better breakdown of what they're actually gonna give the city. And the bid looked really great, so we decided that that was the one we would recommend to council.
Can I ask, is it within what we budgeted for?
Yes, we budgeted, and, uh, grant, we have nine hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. That came in almost a hundred thousand dollars under budget.
What happened here? Okay. Wow. My, uh, my computer kinda went blank. Okay, I'm back. Sorry. Um, anybody have any questions? Uh, Councilman Weisenberg?
Um, I, I was reading through their bid and everything, and it looks super good. Some of the stuff that they're gonna offer, obviously, uh, the firewall with the VPN. That's a huge thing that, uh, needs, that people need to be aware of, or the council, or, or this, you know, the employees, uh, that's a very, very protected system at that point in time, more so than what I'd say we have now, which is a great thing for what we had with the cybersecurity stuff. Um, so I agree with that. The one thing I wanna, I was, wanna really know, um, what is the possibility of them coming back because, and, and doing some of the more work? Cause as a design comes in, it, uh, for the, the pipeline and valve placements and stuff like that, what, 'cause you don't wanna just keep switching companies here and there. Um, we'll have a hundred thousand dollars extra out of that grant to put back towards, 'cause it would be considered SCADA. What's the possibility of them coming in and doing the next step of work to operate the valves off the SCADA system when we implement that?
So, and that's a very good point. Uh, one of the things that we really liked about this, this company, or, is that there's free to de, free data upgrades. So as their services progress, it's a free upgrade. There's no maintenance contract. They this, it's their design. They will come and fix it if there is something wrong, and there is no service contract. It's twenty-four, seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a week, uh, we can call them, and they have somebody on the line to, to fix it, either online, or they're sending somebody out. Uh, we reached out to some of their references, have people that have worked with them, or other municipalities that have worked with them, and rave reviews. I, everybody said that they are wonderful to work with. So that, that was one thing that we were really happy about, is there's no, no service contract for the lifetime of the system, no maintenance. for the lifetime of the system, no maintenance contract, and then free upgrades for their, for their software.
So we will have extra money though to install SCADA system, because I'm not talking about the upgrade and stuff. I'm talking about the, the future SCADA need of installation on valves.
As far as expansions?
And expansions, right? Because you're going to have to expand. You're, you're, you know, when you put valves in a certain place, you're going to have to be able to expand and, and operate that remotely, right? Instead of just go out there and have to hand turn a wheel every time. It's just a wave of the future and how, it's not even the future, it's the past now. But, you know, I, I just want to make sure we're able to kind of secure plug and play type operation with this company to be able to do that.
Yeah, they, as, as far as we want to design and build in the future, they can, they can provide any kind of services that we'll need.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, will you open online voting?
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed. A motion passes with six yeas and one abstain. The one abstain was Councilmember Gardner.
Thank you. Thank you, Cody. All right. Next thing on our agenda is item B, which is Rawlins Health. I'll entertain a motion. Vice Mayor Sanger?
I move to enter into a contract with Wyoming Education Benefits Trust to provide health insurance benefits to the City of Rawlins employees.
Do I hear a second? There's been a motion made in seconded to enter into a contract with Wyoming Education Benefits Trust to provide health insurance benefits to the City of Rawlins employees. Is there any discussion? And I will ask you, Tom, to tell us about it.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. Currently, the City of Rawlins is self-insured on its health, health insurance for its employees. What it means to be self-insured is that we currently set the parameters of our health insurance plans and we hire a third-party administrator that helps us to administer that, those, the, the plan. And then as part of that, we purchase a stop-loss policy that helps protect us against the larger claims. And so all the claims up to $50,000, the city pays. And anything over that, we have insurance purchased for those claims that are higher than that. So, so currently that is, is what we do. So at the end of the year, if our claims are low, we come out ahead on our plan. And if our claims outpace the premiums that we collect through the internal service fund, we have to use our cash reserves on that. So it is a guess as to where our claims will come out. So what we are proposing tonight is a change to the Wyoming Educators Benefit Trust, which is W E B T. And as a trust, they are still technically self-funded, but it is pooled. And so we would be joining a pool. I have the number here. I think there's, I believe there was, there's 91 groups that are part of this trust. And so the trust sets the plans, we pay the premium to the trust, and the trust itself purchases stop-loss and the third-party administrator. So what we are essentially doing is, is spreading our cost for the third-party consulting stop-loss over a group of, of, of 91 groups instead of purchasing that ourselves. And so essentially that will bring down our cost. If you look back, there's a packet in board docs that you would have received that is entitled "Health Insurance Recommendation Presented to Rawlins City Council, June 4, 2024." If, on page three of there, I have kind of their, the balance sheet of our internal service fund. An internal service fund is used for items like health insurance that are contained within an organization. It, it operates like an enterprise fund, but it is contained within the organization set of sites. So we recognize revenues and expenses. And as you can, can see on there, as of March 2024, we are holding about $4.6 million in cash reserves. And if you look back on page four, there's a statement of revenues and expenditures. And as you can see, over the last six years, five years, that we have had years where we've had low claims, which have resulted in additional cash reserves. But you will see that the tide has turned in, in fiscal year '24. So as of March 31st, we are operating at about a $325,000 loss in the, in, in internal service fund. And if we were to join the W E B T, we would just pay a premium to them and the losses or the gains would be absorbed within the trust itself. As you can see on that, on page four, there is a graph there in the middle of the page that shows our claims over the last five years. And you can, you can see during the COVID years, they peaked at about 2.2 million and then they dropped through fiscal year '22. But in the last couple of years, they have increased significantly to where we have experienced a loss within those funds. The orange line in there is the total of the contractual cost that the city pays, which includes consulting, third-party administrator, and the stop-loss. And you can see that those also have come up significantly over the years. On page five, you can see our enrollment. We estimate that for the next year to be at 106 participants. And you can see the classifications that we have there. And so we, we did ask W E B T for a quote for us. And if they would, would quote three different plans is what we asked. And we asked that one of those quotes be for a high deductible plan, which is eligible for a health savings account. And health savings accounts, employees are able to save for medical expenses with the contributions being tax exempt, without having to pay taxes. And those amounts stay within that health savings account until the funds are used or at some point at retirement, they will be able to be turned into a 401K and added towards retirement. So we asked for quotes from three different plans. And as you can see on page seven, in the middle chart, let me see, it's in the upper, where did I put it? Where do we find it? Sorry, here, I need to find it. Okay, it's on page nine. We asked for quotes and so they quoted us on a $2,500 deductible plan, a $3,500 deductible, which is the, the high deductible, and a $1,500 deductible. And what we recommend to council is that we set a defined benefit per employee, per classification that they fall into, which would be single, employee and child, employee spouse, and family. And that we, we set a defined amount and then the employee could choose between the three plans as to which one they wanted to enroll into. And we recommend that we set that defined benefit at the premium for the, for the $2,500 plan. And so what that would do is if the employee enrolled into the $2,500 deductible plan, that the defined benefit would cover the premium. So there wouldn't be any extra or they wouldn't owe any on that. It would just be set at that amount. And if we did that, if the employee enrolled into the $3,500 deductible plan, we would take the difference between the defined benefit and the premium that we would owe W E B T and the excess would go into a health savings account so that they could start to build resources in their health savings. And then if they were to select the $1,500 deductible plan, the defined benefit would not cover that premium and the employee would have to make up that, that difference through a payroll deduction, which would be tax exempt, but they would have to make that up. With the $3,500 deductible health savings, we, we would put in an amount, but the employee could also add their own contributions to that. And it was, I believe it was 4,500 per individual and 8,000 or somewhere in there per, per family that they could do. So, so this would introduce a health savings account option and it would also offer a low deductible option for those that wanted it. And so our recommendation at the bottom of page nine is that we, we offer the, the three different deductibles that were quoted to us and that we set the defined contribution, as you can see in the, the columns on the left on page nine, and the employee can select which of the three plans that they want. Now with a defined benefit plan, we, we've just set that in accordance with the quote for the $2,500 deductible plan, but we could always alter the defined benefit, increase that and add other, other benefits that the employee could enroll into, such as life insurance, disability, and those other things. But for the time being, we've just set the defined benefit at the premium rate of the 2,500. But that's an option moving forward, is to add additional benefits here that, that they're able to select with the amount left over from the defined benefits. So, so that is our recommendation to council is that we enter into a contract with W E B T and that we purchase insurance from them.
Councilman Wells?
I have a few questions, Tom. Is the HSA supposed to be used yearly? A lot of them make you use it by the year.
Honorable Mayor, Councilwoman, no, if, if you were to enter into a flex plan,
Okay.
it would have to be used annually or it is forfeited.
Yes.
A health savings account stays, carries over year to year. So you could build a significant amount in that to be used.
I got a couple more questions, sorry. And then what is our current deductible right now set at?
On.
With our current insurance?
Yeah, it is $1,000. It's on the top of page seven. So for a single, it is 1,000 in-network.
Oh, I see, okay.
2,000 out of network. Family is 3,000 and 6,000.
So it's pretty comparable.
So the deductibles would be a little bit higher with W E B T, but the maximum out-of-pocket is going to be substantially less.
Okay. And then my last question, Tom, is how are you going to message this to our staff so that they understand it as well as you just explained it to us? But that, so they also feel assured that these changes aren't going to change everything?
Correct. So, so we will do a, a couple of different things. We will have representatives onsite from W E B T that they could come and, and visit with. And then we will also go out to the sites to enroll employees and explain the various options that they have. So, so they will have multiple opportunities to educate themselves on the change. But we will start very soon on this to, to get it out, to know this is what we will do. The plan that we are currently on ends July 31st. And so we will look for an August 1st start within, with W E B T.
Councilman Lumen?
I know at the last reading of the, the budget and when we talked about insurance, the employees were against changing it. What changed their mind or? Or do you have a majority now for this particular plan? Were they against like Blue Cross Blue Shield? I, I, I'm just curious as to what the change was from a couple weeks ago.
Honorable Mayor, Councilman Lumen, the, the main concern that, that the employees expressed was the increase in deductible. That was their, their number one concern. And if we're able to add, you know, 5% to the, to the salary base, that will more than make up that deductible amount to employees. To where, like I said, they'll actually come out ahead a little bit. I think a lot of it just comes to education. Higher deductibles sound bad, but you know, but it is a benefit that they have. It's not a certainty that they'll use that deductible.
So the HSA that they offer, does it also, I know my HSA, once you get a certain amount in there, then you can invest that?
Yes.
This one does it as well?
That's what we set up for it.
Okay, that's awesome.
We will probably set this up with Hilltop National Bank out of Casper.
I, I do know that self-insurance is scary because as your group ages, in as small of a group as we have, even though there's a lot of people, it's still a small group, it can, it can really get pretty scary pretty quick. And, and, and the other thing about that is, is having that ability for the health savings account that like for instance, $8,000, if they put that amount in that account and then use that for their deductible or their out-of-pocket or whatever, that's, it's tax deductible. So on 8,000, they will have saved what, 25% or so? So there's, you know, 2,000 that will save them. And I, I know that, I've been through this. And it was, it was, anytime you change the insurance, it's scary a little bit. But that health savings account is an incredible tool that can save you a lot of money. And, and the way that you're setting this up where it, it just keeps accumulating, because on ours, at first, we had to use it all. And there were times when it was like, we're not going to use it all, so we're going to lose it. Well, unfortunately, things happen. We did use it, which isn't a good thing, but it was there for us. The, the other part of it is, is having it, being able to accumulate, it really does change the benefit to a very positive thing. So I, I'm very positive towards this and, and whatnot. Councilman Weisenberg?
Tom, I got a question on page seven. I believe, right? Yes, sorry. Just kind of confusing when I look at this.
Just kind of confusing when I look at this. Most out of network, um, deductibles are more. And, and I don't know that I'm looking at this right, but it says, uh, out of network is 500 and families 1,000. And but when you go down, you know, the max out of pocket is 8,000 and 16,000. Most of the time, your, your deductible is higher out of network, period. So it's kind of confusing to me.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, Councilman Weisenberg. What, what I have in that top chart is a comparison that moves to the right. And I believe what you're looking at is the variance in the, the, um, deductibles between our current plan and the web plan.
Okay.
I believe so. The first column there is what we currently have in network. And so our single deductible is 1,000, the family is three. And the maximum out of pocket on that is 6,012 for family. And then the column next to that is if it's out of network. So currently we have the in-network, out of network. And then we have the $1,500 W E B T, the 2,500 and the 3,500 plan. And then the last two columns are variances between the in-network and the 2,500. So I wanted that comparison. So the deductible for a single would be 15 higher under the 2,500 plan in the second column from the, from the right. The family would be 2,000. And then if you go to the out of network, it would actually, it would increase 500 for single and it would actually be a decrease of 1,000. And then the bottom numbers are the maximum out of pocket, which is when you reach the maximum out of pocket, it is all covered by the insurance, insurance company. It would reduce $2,000 for a single, 4,000 for a family.
No, I, I just want to make sure because the way I see it, it's presented, there's no out of network except that maybe you're adding 500, right? To each 1,500, 2,500, 3,500?
We do not have an out of network with W E B T.
Oh, that could, that could be a heck of a savings for people then.
It's all in-network, it's all the Blue Cross Blue Shield network.
Well, that's, that's a huge savings. I mean, for, for the employees, that's a huge thing because a lot of times, you know, to get even some kind of pre qualification for an out of network doctor or just to have to pay the extra bill of it out of network, it shows right there what you're saving.
Yeah.
So you could go anywhere.
And the maximum out of pocket for a family is, is 16,000 less with the W E B T than it is with the out of network.
Out of network, yeah.
Which is significant.
Well, we live in an area where in-network and out of network, there, there's some, there's not a lot of doctors that are in all the networks. And, I mean, I've struggled with that a little bit too with some of my stuff. And, um, if we lived in Denver, it'd be a different deal, but.
Maybe.
Well, maybe, but the in and out of network is, is a big deal.
No, no, 100%. And, and that's why I was wanting to ask that clarification. But you mentioned like Denver or, or like, you know.
Dallas or something.
Big, big areas, it could mean a street meaning, meaning out of network compared to. So, but thank you, yeah, thank you for the clarification.
Vice Mayor Sanger?
So when, when, um, if and when we move this over, if we move over, we then have $4,326,993 sitting in an account. What happens to that funds?
Okay, Honorable Mayor, Councilman Sanger, there, there are two thoughts on that. First is, is that we will move that as soon as possible in, into an investment. And then second of all, over the years, we will receive increases to the quote annually, it'll be reviewed. We, we would propose that we use that as a rate stabilization fund so that as we receive increases in the insurance, we would start using the, the interest off of that to help pick up those increases so that we do not have to pass those on to employees.
That, that is, that is really, uh, a good idea. And I don't know if the interest rates on these investments are going to stay where they're at, but right now, that would cover, uh, that would cover the increases plus. It should still grow.
Yeah, it still should grow. And then at, at some point, we, we, we could always offer additional benefits with that at some point, if, if it, if it is starting to grow.
We'll have to watch it for a couple of years or something.
Yeah, and let it build.
Councilman Weisenberg?
So that's operated just like an enterprise fund, correct?
That, that's right.
Okay.
And, and enterprise fund and an internal service fund are called proprietary funds, so they operate the same. One is used for outside services and the other is used for within the organization.
Cool. All right, any further discussion? I don't see any. Will you please open online voting?
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed. A motion passes with seven yeas.
All right, is there anything else that needs to come before this body tonight? Seeing none, I'll adjourn the meeting, noting that the next meeting is June 13th, 2024, special council meeting starting at 7:30. And then June 18th, a regular council meeting, uh, at 7:30.
Well, there might be a workshop.
And there may be a workshop, yeah, we'll see. But for right now, there's not one scheduled. Okay, thank y'all. And thank you, Tom and Penise for, and Lynn and everybody for your hard work. Very, uh, very good acting people. I feel good about it.